7:00 PM, so we'll try to kind of move us along as we begin. If we could have the roll call.
Beatty.
Here.
Hartmeier Prig.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Kim. I believe he just joined. I'll mark present. Mitchell.
Here.
Tensusi.
Here.
Tibnon.
Here.
Alvin.
Present.
Vitko. Marking excuse tonight.
Thank you.
Anne Walton.
Here.
I'm sorry, this is Roy. I just joined.
Thank you. I've got you marked here.
Thanks for joining, Roy. We will move into visit our comment. Do we have any folks wishing to address the Bureau Board?
We do not.
Okay. We will move into our joint work session, Agenda Bill 202216. Looks like we've got Rachel and Friends. Please introduce yourself and take it away.
Good evening, councilors and Bureau Board members. My name is Rachel Teeny. I'm a development project manager in our economic development group, and we'll be presenting to you tonight an update on the downtown equity strategy. Let's see. So we're here tonight with members of our consulting team. I'll be joined in a few moments by Dr. Jade Aguilar and Dr. Andres Lopez to share our draft strategies with you tonight for your feedback, your insights, and your thoughts on prioritization. We know we have a long agenda tonight, so we're going to do our best to be brief and really appreciate your feedback. We think we have some great ideas that are supported by thoughtful engagement with our community, research into how other cities are building more equitable places and processes, and quantitative research about our project area here in downtown Beaverton. So we're at an exciting time for the downtown equity strategy. We're nearing the end of this project with our consultant team with the strategy work, but we're also at a beginning. We have a whole next chapter of how to implement what we've developed and learning really how we do the hard work of changing some of the way that we operate. We know that we, as an organization, or really two organizations, the city and Bureau here, are committed to racial equity and creating a vibrant downtown for everyone in our community, and that this work builds upon past work. We're eager for your feedback tonight to help us craft these specific strategies. And please know that our team will be back in front of you again for final adoption, and then I'll be back certainly at several points in the future as we seek guidance from you on how we're implementing this work to really grow as an organization. So I'd like to take a step back for a quick minute and provide the context of why we're working on the downtown equity strategy and why it's important to clearly focus this work on racial equity. So first, we know that racial disparities exist in our community. The Leading with Race Report from Washington County, as well as the Council adopted Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan, point out that race is one of the most powerful predictors of well-being and success, and that people of color continue to face systemic disparities in Beaverton today. Secondly, research from other cities indicates that Black, Indigenous, and people of color or BIPOC communities are disproportionately impacted by involuntary displacement in redeveloping neighborhoods. After analyzing the available market data and demographic data that we presented back earlier, we are concerned about displacement for both residents and small businesses in this community. Our project area has higher proportions of BIPOC residents, renters, people with disabilities, and residents whose primary language is not English, as well as several areas of vulnerable housing stocks such as older, lower-cost, unregulated apartments. Both for businesses and residents, we are seeing historically low inventory and escalating rents. However, we have a great opportunity to make equitable public investments that can further community stability, increase the sense of belonging for everyone in our community, as well as make meaningful changes for how we can increase transparency with our community and build meaningful partnerships, particularly with communities of color and other marginalized groups who are underrepresented in our decision-making processes and closest to the potential harms of displacement. So this project, we're not starting from scratch here. We're building on several policies, plans, and goals where we've already stated our city's commitment to racial equity. This includes our citywide equity statement, which pledges to address institutional racism and historic inequities; our diversity, equity, and inclusion plan, which calls for the use of an equity framework to guide our policy decisions and resource allocation, as well as specifically reducing displacement of people and businesses from marginalized communities. Additionally, the City Council's strategic goals really underscore the importance of this work. We've got several of the goals really applied to this project, but called out specifically the welcoming community goal, where Council affirmed their dedication to achieving equitable outcomes for all. So our goals with this project have been consistent since we started. We want to guide how the city and Bureau approach redevelopment in our project area to build a vibrant downtown for everyone in our community. Our three key objectives are to institutionalize racial equity in our community engagement and decision-making processes to prevent, minimize, mitigate displacement of residents and businesses in our project area, and to create an inclusive downtown. Last summer, members of our consultant team provided racial equity training to Bureau Board members, and then at the July 2021 Bureau Board meeting, our consultants led a conversation with the board about where you felt like the organization was currently at and where you wanted this project to land on a spectrum of community engagement. This slide, I know it's a little tough to read, but it shows how organizations can move from a monocultural to an anti-racist multicultural institution. We heard from the discussions that overall, the board felt like the organization was at about a three, which is categorized here on this chart as symbolic change. But we also heard that there was a significant desire to keep advancing along this spectrum to become an organization that sees racial and cultural differences as assets, builds clear lines of accountability to communities of color, and implements structures for more inclusive decision-making. So before we jump into the draft strategies, I wanted to quickly just share with you where we're at in this process. So last time we came to the Bureau Board, we were in this blue part where we were reviewing all of the inputs to these strategies, and we've advanced a bit along this timeframe. We're here tonight with our draft strategies. For your feedback, we've gotten some great feedback on the staff level, and we'll continue to coordinate this work with staff and refine this. After this, we are planning on some form of some additional engagement, as well as incorporating data that's coming in from the community vision, other community engagement activities that could give us some additional insights to this work, and we'll continue to refine these strategies before coming to you middle of this year, we expect, for final adoption. So now I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Jade Aguilar, to talk about the strategies for stability.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Okay. So we are approaching this from, I guess, two different angles. One is strategies that focus on stability. So how do we make sure that we are incorporating strategies that allow current residents and business tenants to feel like they, you know, can stay put in their current area? And then also focusing on strategies of belonging, so making sure that all residents of Beaverton feel like this is a place that really welcomes them and causes them to feel like they belong in the community. So with that, we also are approaching it from, what can we do with existing strategies that might just need some refocusing, reprioritizing to really, to lead into these stabilities and belonging? They're already doing great work, but they need some adjustments versus new priorities and new strategies that will come in the next slide about what the city could do in addition to what it's currently doing. So with this one, this is about modifications to existing programs using a racial equity framework, using the language and engagement that we heard. What is the community actually looking for? And so what this could look like is, you know, under the category of businesses, the city already provides business technical assistance. But is there a way to provide that kind of assistance in a more targeted approach, either through culturally appropriate stakeholders, through language, through a better identification of what are the unique barriers and technical assistance needs that immigrant business owners have, or business owners of color, or, you know, just a variety of approaches that really better understand where those most atneed community members are, and then offering the assistance in a really targeted universalism way, which would help everybody, but we know will be directed towards those folks. We've seen that Beaverton has had a really positive business attraction strategy for restaurants, and that's, you know, proven very effective. How do you take that same idea, but this time really target it towards some of the things that emerge from our engagement about what are the kinds of businesses that residents of color and other underrepresented groups are looking for? So that might be, you know, certain kinds of culturally specific businesses that you can now take those same existing strategies and use them to attract a different style of business now. For, for instance, for the parks, parks, public spaces, this came up a lot in the engagement. There's already a lot happening in Beaverton around public spaces and parks and events, but making sure that those, the strategies used to bring the community together are also fully representing the wide range of cultural identities and family styles and accessibility needs that are so important to bringing these public spaces and public events to life. So this is about just taking this racial equity framework and taking a kind of a more nuanced look at the existing programs that the city has going and trying to think about them in new ways. Okay, next slide. The second part of our strategy approach is to think about what new programs can really bring more stability and belonging to the downtown area, including the Allen Boulevard District. So for instance, we've seen, effective in other cities, lots of ideas around legacy business programs, so really recognizing and elevating and supporting the local, the longtime local businesses. Maybe, and this can happen in a variety of ways, it could be that some, there's explicit grant funding that's only available to those businesses, or it's about really promoting and marketing those businesses, or prioritizing them for specific existing programs like we saw before. In the inclusive and accessible commercial spaces, again, a lot of potential options here around master leasing. How do we make more spaces available to, for a lower cost? When we, you know, Rachel mentioned before that we see these escalating rents, we really want to be able to offer the ability for these, for either existing businesses or potentially new BIPOC-owned businesses to feel like they have a space in Beaverton that they can afford, that's safe, that's been designed for their business to grow. So those could be incubator spaces. Those could be community kitchen spaces that are commercially, you know, commercially available, coworking spaces, et cetera. For business organizing, one of the things that came up in the engagement was the desire for local businesses to have a better working relationship with the city and with each other. So how do we facilitate that kind of desire for more relational approaches for businesses in the city to learn from each other, to learn what is needed for them, and also for maybe some existing businesses to mentor new businesses, or for them to just be organized in a different way? So those are some opportunities there around business organizing. Community ownership allows for a few different possibilities. That could look like a kind of a financial investment opportunities for local residents. We've seen some past examples where maybe there's a building that's purchased, and as a way to allow local residents to invest not only financially, for financial gains for themselves, but also feel like a sense of ownership in their community, they become, you know, small kind of shareholders in that building and thus in the community and the businesses that exist there. Or this could look like ownership by a community organization. And then we know that within this, our project area, that there are a couple of mobile home parks, and preserving them, there's a number of different approaches. That could look like either really helping maintain the existence of the park, so folks are not displaced, either connecting the park, the existing residents to a nonprofit for acquisition, or it could look like if that isn't an option, you know, how do we create a soft landing for residents? If the mobile park, mobile home park does need to close, what does that could look like? Some kind of counseling, one-on-one counseling, trying to rehome the folks that are currently living in the park? So these are, I think we're at the stage now where we're looking for, you know, Bureau to weigh in on some sort of prioritization, and also then help us narrow down some of those strategies, because within each of these, there's a number of initiatives that could emerge from these, and these were identified through the, not just the best practices, but ideally, but mostly from the community engagement aspect. And I think with that, I'm going to hand it over to Andres.
Thank you, Jade. So I want to talk with you today about two, with two different slides. First, I want to talk about equitable internal processes, because the engagement gave us a lot of information about the strategies that Jade just covered, but it also really made us understand what community thinks of what goes on inside of government and how they think that some of those things can shift to be different, so that they can be more a part of it. So in the recommendations to the community engagement, you have these listed out and all the details. So I'm not going to go into specifics, but I want to just sort of talk about these broader strategies that come in these areas, right? So first of all, the community members really identified a need for addressing or accounting for and addressing organizational inequalities, right? So thinking about what has, what has the city done well that the community desired? What has it not done well? How can you retain and hire more BIPOC staff, right? So the community feels like there's more people who are representative of them. How do you develop a formal system to decilo the internal processes and relationships, right? So that not every project is doing community engagement with all these different groups, right? Throughout a course of six months, right? So it doesn't look like the city has a good coordination effort together, right? This is what is communities reflecting back to us. So there's some, there are some strategies, broad strategies there on how to address organizational inequities that are pretty flexible, right? That you can sort of pick and take with. The next one was communication, right? So thinking about not just how we communicate in different languages or how we communicate via different mediums or different actors who can bring us to certain communities, but how that communication creates a connection, right, between the city and the residents? The next one was thinking about building meaningful partnerships. So as we address these organizational inequities, we think about how we communicate some of those things. Then we think differently about how we build relationships that actually feel meaningful to community. So there's a lot of examples in the recommendations there to talk about some of the creative ways to engage community and ways to keep community in a place where their ideas, their desires, their strategies are being heard, and they can see that being part of what's moving forward. We heard a lot about reducing administrative burdens, right? That there are just some things like applying for government assistance or grants or other technical assistance, right? But those processes can be simplified, and we can create a centralized place. For example, for people to be able to get that assistance or to better understand what assistance is available, right? Just some examples. And lastly here, I think about utilizing qualitative data, right? So our community members share their feedback in ways that feel most authentic to them through narrative, through story, right? So the way in which the city addresses those stories, shares those stories, uses those stories to make new decisions, right? Also has to be reflected back to community. So these are, again, broader strategies that we've learned that have some pieces that are flexible, and the staff is already implementing a lot of these, so you know, which is really exciting. So this is the first slide I wanted to talk about and get the city and Bureau thinking about this differently. But the next slide here is, you can go to the next slide, thank you, is really the follow-up. So we have this sort of broad sense of strategies that need to change and how we can change them, but we also need a long-term process or a system, a set of tools, if you will, that will help us implement this behavior on the long term, right? So our community members not only sort of pointed out how they don't understand how the sausage is being made inside and how they'd like to be a part of that, right? But they also sort of said, we want to be more relational. So what, what the next step is, is thinking about how we can address some of these processes, how we can share that out to community, and then how we can engage in a new process of creating better relationships. So just as important as creating good strategies that will bring us good outcomes where people feel like they belong and they feel like they're centered and this is a place that's theirs, there also needs to be relational processes where the city and the community can build relationships, not just in what the city accomplishes, but in the process of accomplishing those things, right? And so what we've been working on is this relational process for a racial equity tool. And it's really exciting to me. I'm kind of nerding out just because I think about how hard it is to build good relationships, or like how we don't often taught how to build good relationships. And the community members that we've been engaging, not just in this process, but that Beaverton has been engaging for years now, has given us really clear terms with really clear language around what makes a good relationship. So we think of things like transparency, right? Which is fundamentally about moving the organization towards more openness, more generosity, more honesty and clarity. We think of accountability as a very specific method in which we achieve a goal, and then how we create processes to make sure we're checking to what extent we're achieving that goal, and then being honest in the end about what we were able to do and what we were not able to do, right? Again, communication is not just about giving information, but building a relationship through giving information. And this term reflexivity is a fancy way of putting together reflection and action, right? Demonstrating to the community that the city is always reflecting, that we're never landing in some place where we're done learning, where we're settled, right? That we're always in this place of reflecting upon what's happening and that we're taking action with that reflection, right? That reflexivity is critical. And then lastly, thinking about how internal and external collaborations can actually have power in them. What does that look like? So we've been developing this tool. We've tested it out with some of the staff. We've gotten really great feedback. And what we'll have at the end of this process is something that's really clear on how you ensure these specific relational processes in the work that you're doing, particularly around the decision-making that you're making. So when you're making budgets, when you're building policy, when you're making programs, right? How, how do you ensure that you have these relational elements in those processes? So we're really excited, not just for, you know, helping Bureau and the city to understand what community wants, but also trying to engender a new way of being relational. And if, and if you're in the city can adopt this and do this well, it'll be a model for cities, because this is, this is what community is really begging for most, right? Is to be in a real, authentic relationship with you, the decision maker. So really excited about that tool, and you'll hear more about that soon. I'll pass it back to Rachel.
Thank you, Andres. So as you heard from our consultants and then the materials in your packet, we've presented these draft strategies in the three areas above. And, you know, we present these tonight for your input because we think that they can really move us in the direction of meeting the objectives. Our project area includes areas both inside and outside of the urban renewal area, notably the Allen Boulevard District. Many of these strategies require resources of some kind, some with time, money, and all, certainly with staff effort. Some require changes in our perspective and our approach. Among the stability and belonging strategies that you heard about tonight, we do recommend starting with the stability strategies in order to ensure that current residents and businesses have a better chance to stay in place and benefit from the changes happening in the neighborhood. And finally, after engaging staff at various levels throughout the organization, it's clear that there will need to be a high level of coordination among staff as we start thinking about how to implement this work. So these are some of the things that we're thinking about. I know we have limited time tonight, but we do have some questions for you. Due to the timing, I would like to focus on this third question. Based on what you've heard tonight and reviewed in your packet, what are your highest priorities for implementation among the draft strategies?
Sorry, I thought I unmuted myself. Cassandra, please.
Thank you. I did not, I didn't want to jump ahead. I particularly love the strategies to create low-cost, safe curated spaces. I think that that is oftentimes leasing and renting fees are an impediment for small businesses. So I think that is an excellent priority. I also appreciate the construction disruption assistance. I know that when you're operating on such a narrow margin as a small business owner, that one or two months of impact to your income from that traffic could be detrimental. And then I also appreciate it reducing the administrative burdens, because it's hard enough to navigate all the aspects of being a small business owner if you continue to have a lot of bureaucratic impediments. So I appreciate all the information. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. We do have a request. If there's a way for anyone to copy priorities in the chat, or if you want to refer us where we should be going. And Laura?
Thank you. Thank you for that information. I think, you know, I know that we have priorities, but I think overall, what we need to do as far as a team, as far as Bureau is concerned, the number one priority is making sure that the program works, right? And I think that, you know, I, you know, Andre, what I heard was the relationship piece of it is a really huge priority. But for me, I think of the subjectivity, and I think I've seen a lot of huge cities fail when it comes to saying, oh, well, we can do better. We can do it differently. And that doesn't change because, or that doesn't move the needle, in my opinion, because you have a lot of people who are always going to be dissatisfied. It's not going to be because it's so subjective. There's people who are going to be happy. There's people who are never going to be satisfied. And I don't want this to be a bleeding situation in which program funding keeps going out, and we don't have any true quantifiable, you know, statistical measurements of what success looks like. So I feel like we really need that in order to truly be successful and really help our community. Otherwise, it's just a lot of, you know, virtuous gesture at best, great words being used, and not a lot of content that's being put back. So I think that's my number one concern for this particular project. You know, because when I'm thinking equitable, I'm thinking a fair and impartial, and some of this stuff was equitable, and some of it makes me tilt my eyebrows and say, hmm, that doesn't seem very impartial if we're targeting, you know, that word target itself doesn't mean equity. So I just really, you know, I struggle with this a little bit, and I just, moreover, I think it's a great idea. I think we have to do it the right way, but we have to be very intentional about what the results are that we're looking for. Otherwise, it's going to always be a fail.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ashley?
Thank you. Thank you, Jade, Andres, and Rachel for the presentation. I, this is honestly just such an exciting body of work to me. I've been appointed to the TB How I Help Steering Committee, and I actually told them that they should look at what this work that y'all have been doing as like guidance for how to be really intentional and have an equitable lens for this type of work. So I look at this and I feel really hopeful. I feel like it reflects our objectives of really making sure we are doing good with this work, that we are not displacing and harming communities. So I feel like the priorities that I have are reflected in the document. And so I don't know that I have additional feedback, other than I feel really, I feel to me like this hits the bullseye in terms of like where I want us to go, so.
Thanks. Mark?
Yeah, first of all, you know, I think one of, one of the leading outcomes that we're trying to accomplish is to offer aid and service and support to people who have difficulty or a lack of resources in accessing the systems that make our community work, or at least have made our community work historically. So, you know, breaking down certain barriers that were there because they were easy for some people to get across, but are harder for other people to get across, intentionally investing in some, some elements of the community as opposed to others. I think all of those are the kinds of things that we're trying to accomplish in the general, general sense. Specifically, I want to agree with Cassandra that I think that investing in curated spaces is really valuable. And it's also something we've been doing for a while. Certainly, the soon-to-be-named Oregon Startup Center, OTBC, is one of those kinds of things, and the not-for-profit incubator is another. We're already talking about curated spaces in the parking garage, the Bureau Parking Garage. So I think that's a really valuable addition to the portfolio of reaching out to communities through a variety of engagement mechanisms and business support mechanisms, which leads me to my third point, which is the whole section on relationships and developing relationships. We, we do a lot of that, but we do it indirectly. And I think there's an awkwardness that's going to come from that, which is that we engage with And, and I think there's an awkwardness that's going to come from that, which is that we engage with multiple outside entities who do great work interacting with members of our community. I'm thinking of MISO, I'm thinking of the Adelante Mu Harris, I'm thinking of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the, our Beaverton Area Chamber of Commerce with the Impact Beaverton Program. But all those relationships are being established between those organizations and the people that they interact with. And we, as the city, aren't necessarily benefiting from all of that interaction. So I think one of the navigations that we're going to have to figure out is how do we get more benefit from that engagement for the relationship that needs to be built between the city as an entity and the people who are being engaged? So it's a question, it's not a suggestion. I don't know how we do that, but I think that's something we got to look at. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Allison.
Thank you. And thank you to Rachel, Jade and Andres for speaking with us tonight. Just a couple of things to add to all the comments. I think this is just a good thing for Bureau in general to think about, but especially as it relates to this, is that the definition of renewal is not stagnant and it should be informed from a lot of different perspectives on exactly what that means. The work that we're doing here is kind of concrete from the beginning of, well, we would like to make sure that what is on the land is, is operating to the highest and best use for the population as it exists now and ideally going forward and that we're increasing value. But how we get to that, I think, is a moving target. And what highest and best use is, is also up for debate. And I would love to have those questions posed to, to folks as part of this work to, to, to ask them, what exactly is blight to you? Because that's another thing that usually triggers the idea of even creating a renewal district is it's blighted. Well, what exactly does that mean? And who's, who's interpreting that? And let's maybe expand our ideas of how we address it. So I just, I, I like, I like the idea of us kind of blooming out the way we think about this and getting a lot of perspectives and maybe pushing the literature a little bit in directions maybe hasn't gone when we think of urban renewal. The other thing is I'm really excited about the idea of land trusts or creating ownership opportunities. And that's one thing that also really concerns me about a lot of the development work we do is we make big, big dense buildings. And there's really no opportunity for individual ownership in, in that kind of a structure. Or at least not meaningfully, where at the end of your tenure as a business owner, you have something to truly pass along to your family. And if that means smaller footprint, smaller buildings, something that could potentially incrementally be paid towards and ultimately owned. I think that's a wonderful thing. And, and so I, that's a part of this. I'd love to be really seriously explored, especially along Allen. But extending out from there. And then the last one is I was really excited to see this come up here because it's coming up. A lot of conversations I'm having and hearing is around mobile home park preservation and also care and feeding of, of them to make sure that they're functioning well. They, they play an important role that's often overlooked or undervalued. And we don't have a lot of them in our city. And the ones we have, I think we need to, to make sure that we're preserving them for all sorts of reasons, but especially for our seniors. So yeah, those are my thoughts. Just want to throw them out there. Thank you.
Sarah.
Yeah, I, I just want to build on what you're saying because I totally agree. And I think that I, I wrote down this real authentic relationship with the city, right? That you said, Andres. And I think that, to me, I'm like, sometimes the role that the city can play is actually sort of like getting the right people together. And, and I think like, there's a lot of interested people in the community that could show up at the table, sort of inability to help. And how does the city sort of facilitate that? So you take sort of the, the, what you're hearing sort of from the community with people that are in a position to, whether it be sort of invest or nonprofits and sort of facilitate that. I think like what the, the Bureau Board has done, or the, you know, Bureau has done so well is like, if you think about the restaurant, it's like combining sort of like these spaces with developers, with restaurant groups and sort of like inviting people into Beaverton that sort of weren't interested in Beaverton in the past. And I think, I think that same sort of energy sort of could go to housing. So there was a couple of ball points and I think the mobile home park is like, how does the city sort of get the right people at the table to actually sort of create something without the city feeling like they have to do it? And I think that like, if you can sort of get the developers and the, the sort of interested bodies to the table, that sort of magic could happen as it has in the, in the sort of more commercial spaces. But I think, you know, again, I know that we've created sort of housing, but I always sort of think about that cycle of housing and sort of how do we think about moving people from rentals into sort of smaller homeownership into larger homes and sort of cycling people through that? And, and how are we sort of helping our community to do that? And I know there are interested people out there. But sort of how do we invite them to the table? And get creative just as we have within the, the sort of restaurant strategy, which has been so successful. So anyway, that's my thoughts. But thank you. I think it's incredible work. Obviously, this is the hard part now. Because, you know, we know what we have to do and now we actually have to do it. But I think it's, I'm, I'm glad we're having the conversation.
Thanks. Roy.
Thank you for the presentation. I think it was very helpful and very informative to me. The most important part of this project is the first part is the community engagement and the process. It's most complex, it's most time consuming. But I think we need to start, and it's most difficult to measure. But I think that is what's gonna more in the long term and permanently establish these communication and, and, and engagement from these, from those who are typically not engaged. So I'm reminded of a, a meeting between Mayor Beatty and the Korean community several months ago. And, you know, I don't know how it originally got set up, but it was very meaningful to the Korean community that they were able to have the mayor come to the Korean community center and address and have communication. But that's, that happened one time. And, you know, I see that and I see that as an opportunity for their, and I think there should be some way for there to be a better connect, a connection that is more permanent. So the Korean community feels like they have a way to communicate with the city without having to have a in-person meeting with mayor every time. And I think mayor connected the community with the chief of police. And again, in Korean community, there was an idea that, hey, we talked to the mayor and we talked to the chief of police. They basically dictate what's going to happen with the city. So anything can be done through them, which is not the case. There's a process involved. But that just goes to show more of an intimate relationship is needed, where maybe there's a liaison person that the Korean community can connect with, who will help the community reach out to different departments or explain how the process works. I mean, I, I also am reminded by, there's a, in the East, Multnomah County, there's a Slavic Eastern European community. And many of them get their news through a radio station, you know, in their language. And that's how they get their news and everything. So the idea was a city should, you know, maybe on a monthly basis, go to the station and there was a, there's a translator who can translate and tell them what the city is up to. And a ways to communicate and ways to connect with different people at the, at the city if that's our question or anything like that. So we need to somehow establish this kind of communication channel or in a pattern of engagement between these groups that are typically have difficulty, I mean, there are many different ways that they have difficulty, barriers, whether it's language or just, just culturally. Or there's somehow barrier that they see between the cities over here and we're here. And I think that's the most important work that we, we shouldn't do.
Roy, thank you. You're speaking to my heart. I could go on, on that. But I don't think I will be able to in this short amount of time, but I want to say that like, I think in this new form of government, like we've been trying to manage like the city manager's office and like the mayor's office and what does community engagement look like? And, and I think to, to Mark's point around, like we have these organizations doing this work and how is it getting to us? And, and I think we need to build that muscle quite a bit. I think that it will grow. But it is a process and to your point, like having that point person, I think is really important. But in the interest of the questions that the team asked, I just wanted to add a couple of things, but thanks. Roy, I feel like I could call you after this. I, I think the things that resonated, which Cassandra and Mark mentioned was the inclusive spaces, construction disruption and the community ownership. So those are just, I think, things that kind of called out to me right away. I think the other piece of this, which I know is going to be tricky, is actually being able to put money behind this because I know we're going to be in a bit of a crunch and I don't know that, that, that there is money to put behind this. And so how do we figure that out and, and make that happen? When we talk about relational work to Andreas's point, we have to move beyond transactional, right? So we got all this information. And so if what we do with it is say that we don't have money to put behind it, that, that kind of hurts our relationship and trust building that we need to start getting with our community. So I just, I think that's something for us on council to be really thinking about is like, how are we, like, how are we going to modernize community engagement in a way that when we get feedback from our community, we are able to act in a way that is responsive or at, at minimum communicative and says, here's, you know, here's where we landed. So the city manager's not here, but I was looking at pages nine to 11 of the Agenda Bill and I just, like, I just think we need to adopt it. Like, this should be the staple for how our city operates, community engagement and/or a working blueprint of, of the things that we think about. Because when I read the bullet points on those pages, I believe most of our, my fellow counselors, and I would imagine our Bureau Board members would say, yeah, we should do that. Yeah, we should do that, right? Like every community engagement should have that or attempt should have that. But I just, I, I want to make sure that I say this, hopefully for Jenny to hear or Patrick, please pass this along, is how do we take page nine, 10 and 11, which, which gives us really prescriptive ways to do community engagement with communities of color and actually apply it across the city in all of the engagement and work that we do. So it is 6:43 and I know we have a second agenda item. So any last comments or words? Okay. Rachel, is that good for you?
Thank you. We really appreciate your time and, and, and thoughts on this and we'll, we'll be back.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And we're gonna, yeah, thanks. We're going to move on to Agenda Bill 2022-17. It looks like we've got Molly's here, maybe, or some, yes, she is. Welcome. Please introduce yourself and others that are with you.
Thank you, everybody, and good evening. I'm Molly Rebenevitz. I'm the parking manager for the city. And I'm joined here by my, joined here with my consultants, Julie Dixon and Emily Quattonets from Dixon Resources Unlimited. We're going to try to make this as quick as we can because you guys have, they're meeting in 15 minutes. We've been talking about parking for the five years that I've been here. The DP map, as I call it lovingly, downtown parking management and action plan. We, we engaged, we started engagement on this back before COVID. It had a slow roll. And then we picked up again in March of 2021 and we've been moving forward ever since. We know that parking is part of the bigger picture for downtown. You just heard about a really important part of it. You're going to hear later in council about transportation systems plan update and we've got a lot going on with development. Parking is just a piece of that, but it's an important piece of that. And we're hearing from the community how important it truly is to support our small businesses, our residents that live there, redevelopment, commercial development, our entertainment and restaurants. So this program is designed to be a menu of action items that as we collect data and manage our parking system as it currently exists and, and see how it truly operates, that we can come back to you all with this list of recommendations and we can look at what the data is telling us and which of these recommendations might be the appropriate ones to start evaluating and implementing. So each of these recommendations that we've put forward in our document tonight and that we're going to discuss very quickly in our presentation tonight are not steadfast. We may not need them all. We are, we are presenting a list of action items that can be considered to fit Beaverton's needs. With that, I'm going to let Emily and Julie start the presentation so that we can get feedback from you all. So thank you so much for the time.
Thank you so much, Molly. And honestly, Molly, that was a great recap. And so we'll be sure to be as expedient as possible. And it's important to talk about, when we talk about the downtown parking management action plan that's in our school, is that we are in draft form right now. And I think it's really important to really recognize the transparency that's been involved in this process and just the level of outreach. And as Molly highlighted, the intention of bringing back implementation packages once the action plan is adopted is really important. So that when we talk about the guiding principles, it's really about the overall strategy. And most importantly, as you'll see in the next few slides, it's really about that integration and collaboration with all of the other projects that are basically going on throughout the city. So when we talk about these strategies, it's really about that level of coordination. I see so many familiar faces even just from the last presentation because there were so, there's so much collaboration included in this project because it's really about the vision for Beaverton moving forward. And as we go to the next slide, you'll see again just some of the projects that parking obviously touches. And so I don't think there's a department in the city that hasn't been involved in this process. And I think we can all appreciate the fact that parking does touch, touch so much. And I know that not everybody wants parking to be the top priority of the conversation, but it's really important to recognize that parking is a part of that process. And while I like to fast track and wave that magic wand that we've talked about in the past, I mean, it's really important that we have to take incremental steps as we go to the next slide and really talk about those strategies. One of the really biggest critical parts of this process throughout pre-COVID, during COVID, post-COVID, and whatever the next aspects of our community is going to be, engagement is a really big part of that. This is just a summary of just some of the working sessions and updates that we brought before on City Council and Bureau. And this is just that slight recap for that engagement. And I can't even tell you the countless levels of community engagement that we've had, whether it be one-on-one, focus groups or other strategic meetings going door to door, really trying to get the word out so that we can get that feedback to make sure that the strategies are realistic and achievable for the downtown in particular. Next slide. And so when we talk about the progress updates, I think we can all appreciate that Molly was hired five years ago, really with this direction for this particular project. We initiated in January of 2020, right there before COVID. And as we basically came back online throughout the pandemic, we had an overwhelming response to the online survey, having received numbers over a thousand responses. These are staggering when we talk about a response to a parking survey. And we've definitely incorporated that feedback from not only the survey, but all of the focus groups to basically tie this in. Anybody that saw us out at the farmer's market or even out there on the First Street Commons, the popsicles for parking program, I've never had that happen before, but that was a really creative idea and other cities have loved it. And just to provide your feedback or opinion on parking, you got a popsicle. And it was really, a really great initiative. I think we can all appreciate that the central parking garage is open and it's the first paid parking location for Beaverton. And there's a technology system called FLASH, which is the Parking Access Revenue Control System that's been installed to help us manage and regulate ingress and egress and also will be tied in to the Performing Arts Center for special events as well. Also, the city completed a procurement process, which the pilot was funded and the contract approved. And they're basically ready to go. And I think you're going to hear us talk about that this is really a priority for the community. You might be surprised to know that the community is asking for enforcement. I think that the importance is, is that you do have posted regulations today, especially time limits. And there's no consistent coverage today. So that resource is really intended to help us manage and importantly, gather the data so that regardless of what strategies you all move forward with, this is really a critical aspect of the project. They've already acquired the vehicles, which are hybrids and are basically being wrapped as we speak. So this project, to be able to launch the warning campaign and the education campaign is basically right at the starting line, especially going into summer. We're hoping to get that program off the mark. Next slide. And so as we talk about And so as we talk about the guiding principles, this is something that as we've gone back out through the outreach, this is something that we really message with the community. We've gotten a lot of great feedback on this. But making sure that as we talk about the strategies is that they all come back to making sure that we have a sustainable solution, not just in cost, but also towards the environment, making sure that it's equitable and that it's fair to everyone and making sure that the curb is accessible to all. Making sure that it's an adaptable program, knowing that we don't need to do everything overnight, but making sure that we can make data-driven decisions through incremental recommendations. And then I always like to share, making sure it's a positive experience. We always like to talk about making it easy, convenient, accessible and to avoid temporary Band-Aid solutions, really getting to the core root of the issue so that we can be in a proactive rather than reactive stage and not just pushing the problem from one side of town to the other so that we can really focus on compliance rather than enforcement because ideally we want people to follow the rules. Next slide. And so getting into the strategies, I think it's important to recognize that regardless of the approval of the draft action plan, parking compliance is a really critical component of all of the future decisions for the downtown. And so beginning and initiating that compliance program is really critical so that we can begin to collect the data. And most importantly, influence the way people behave in our downtown and get them to park in the locations that we ideally want them to park for the long term and ideally be able to maintain the posted time limits as they stand so that we can really identify with consistent compliance where people are parking today. And again, this was a really common request of the community and something that we know we can gather strategic data that can then influence ongoing parking management decisions. And also the requirement or request for the Parking Operations Project Manager. This is a position that is really important towards the strategy of supporting the existing parking manager with the operation and the ongoing implementation. It's important to highlight that stakeholder engagement doesn't end here. The more transparent, the more we can get the word out there, the marketing and outreach is a really important part of this process. So staying engaged, making sure the community is aware of what's going on is really an important part of that. We have a really hands-on rollout process for the compliance program so that we can get as much messaging out there as possible. And through this process, we know that we can identify ways to consolidate the parking supply, looking for ways that we can mitigate the throughput for pedestrian access, bike access, looking for shared parking agreements so that we can look for the demand, balancing demand and supply and the prioritization of disabled parking spaces and short-term parking spaces. That has really changed the footprint of our downtown as a result of the pandemic. And again, encouraging folks to park once, park and basically visit all of your downtown locations. And again, really that focus on customer prioritization. Next slide. And just a couple more of the strategies I already mentioned, shared parking. Some of you might not be aware, the city actually has already implemented several shared parking agreements. They're working quite effectively and we know that we can do more. And we know that that's an ideal way to identify locations for employees who work in our downtown to park inconvenient, accessible locations, especially for those employees who work after dark and are concerned about safe passage to their cars wherever they store them. Making sure that we leverage the wayfinding program to make sure that we can leverage that access, breadcrumbing to where available parking is. And we've had a lot of conversation about the electric vehicle infrastructure and knowing the importance of being able to ensure that we have EV infrastructure in place. There's a lot of programs running federally right now that we think we can take advantage of. And then also, very importantly, is the multimodal aspect of management, looking at alternative modes of transportation, knowing that we're not going to be able to eliminate the car overnight, but being able to promote these alternatives will help mitigate traffic congestion. The fact that we have TriMet and the fact that we have light rail running through the downtown, we have a reliable transportation system. We definitely want to take those opportunities wherever feasible and to make sure that micromobility is tied into that. And as we go to the next slide, I wanted to highlight the fact that this is just an example of if an implementation plan were to come forward, it's basically packaged something like this where it's based on data so that recommendations can be brought forward to council, to Bureau for ultimate review and consideration and approval. A great example would be based on data occupancy, the need to potentially expand hours of operation or expand into the weekends. Those are all things that would basically come as a result of the guidelines and as a result of the data that is collected. And then to be able to provide future shaping, a lot of people will talk about a dynamic parking management solution. And that's honestly what we're talking about here is using data to manage change rather than relying upon opinions or perspectives, actually relying on on data as a result. Next slide. And as we talk about the next steps, we're looking forward to having your feedback here tonight so that we can finalize the downtown parking management action plan based on your feedback. There would be around a municipal code updates along with some financial projections that could be supported for ensuring a sustainable solution. And then ideally, staff would bring back those implementation packets like we described that really do work towards supporting improved routes to parking so that we can simplify the congestion impacts in our downtown. And again, looking at incremental adjustments. As Molly mentioned, it doesn't mean that you're saying we're going to do everything that's outlined in the action plan. It basically means taking incremental steps as we go through the process. And again, maintaining that commitment of communications to the community as well as to Bureau and council. And as we go to the next slide, you'll see our thank you, our contact information, as well as parking@beavertonorgan.gov is a tremendous resource. It's monitored and responses are given quickly. Having this one-stop-shop location to communicate concerns, feedback is something that we are advocating to be maintained and continued. And on the next slide, we included just a couple of questions that we wanted to solicit from you. I see that there's already some questions in the chat. I'm going to ask if Emily can copy this list of questions and put it into the chat box for reference like y'all did with the last presentation. And I will take a look in the chat and see if there's any questions you wanted me to answer, but I'll work at the discretion of you all. But thank you for having us tonight. Hopefully that was quick and efficient.
Thank you for kind of rushing this through that presentation. I know that Ashley dropped in some questions. If you can read them, I think it'd be great for the team and I know Mark's next.
No problem. So I see posting my questions here in the interest of time. Happy to get an email response. How long will the warning campaign be? I think it's very important that our community know that parking limits will be enforced before they receive consequences. One hundred percent, I like to reinforce the fact that we're basically looking to seek compliance of the rules that have been posted for quite some time. But you're absolutely right. Not only a messaging noticing campaign through public outreach, flyers, going to the downtown business associations, even going door to door for that matter, as much as we can get that compliance and awareness out there. But I would anticipate thirty days minimum with ideally forty-five days. It could be extended to sixty days. The one thing that I think is really important to recognize is that as a result of the partners that have been selected to help support this program, the compliance officers will actually have the type of technology that will identify for Emily's vehicle. Let's just say her license plate is ABC one, two, three. The parking ambassadors will have the awareness to know that Emily received a warning notice yesterday for parking in front of this fire hydrant or in front of this, you know, red curb and know that that vehicle received a warning notice. So it can become city policy in regards to whatever the business rules are, whether or not Emily should receive another warning notice. Those are the types of details that we'll have to finalize and fine tune. And ultimately, how many warning notices does Emily receive before she ultimately receives a parking citation? But basically, the warning campaign definitely for that first, you know, thirty to forty-five days is ideal when we talk about how to get the information out there to the community. Next question is, will there also be, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, just because there's one minute left, if we wanted to give Councilor San Suzy an opportunity to ask us questions, I'm more than happy to answer these via email, even though they're, it's very important for everyone to hear them. I just want to make sure we stay on time.
Do you want me to continue reading them?
Mark, do you want to make your?
Um, yeah, um, it's really really related to time. This is a a big new thing for the city of Beaverton. It's something we've talked about for a long time. It's something that's important for the city. It's not a fifteen-minute topic and I would suggest that we schedule this for a longer discussion at a future date so that people can think on it, think on the questions that have been asked, think on the questions that Ashley's already asked. And everybody hopefully will have a chance to expound a little bit more in a little more detail on these things. I mean, I know I could talk for ten minutes on this subject, so I won't. Thanks.
Yeah, and I know the mayor dropped in a similar comment and I'm trying to be thoughtful of time and I kind of foresaw this potentially happening. So I think if we could bring this back again, I'm just looking for someone to head nod me. Okay, yeah. So, um, so thank you for this presentation. We'll just need to plan a little bit better with the agenda for the future. We will figure out a way to bring this back for Bureau to review to you. We do have a final business item, which I don't believe is really anything formal, so I'm going to let Tyler give us a quick update on that.
Very much, Chair. Tyler Ryerson is FBA's on for Bureau. We're asking to withdraw Bureau Bill two zero two two dash one eight Garage Retail Space Contract Approval due to the fact that it is no longer valid, given that the bid has been canceled and does not warrant consideration from the Bureau Board tonight. And the reason why, we had a small number of responses to the invitation to bid. Combined with the wide disparity between the bids and disqualification of one of the bids indicates that the solicitation document should be modified to clarify the specifications and incorporate the information in the issued addenda to simplify the bidding process. Therefore, it is in the public interest to reject all offers and reissue the invitation to bid. Our goal is to obtain as much feedback as we can on specification and hope that we have better bids in the reissue in the very near future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any board communications? Just so you all know, we did try to, oh, go ahead, Laura.
Thank you so much, Nadia. Tyler, I just wanted to mention real quickly. I think there might be a little bit more like administrative direction needed and I know that's kind of what the cancellation is about, but I'm not sure if people are available to ask questions, but that would be a great resource.
Thank you very much, Board Member Mitchell.
I will, Vice Chair Walton and I will, or Sarah and I will work better to make sure we're able to a lot enough time for these topics. We will now adjourn the meeting because we now need to move into City Council. And I know our staff need a couple of minutes just to switch things off, so Bureau is adjourned. Thank you, Bureau members.